Just going through YouTube as well.
Okay.
Right after people.
Yeah.
Okay, we. Okay. Should we go to the table?
Called the committee of the finance committee get order on October 7th, 2021.
Also, we're covering up the Boris Selecting Seeings, uh, is that October 7th? And it's 56 over one. I saw a roll call of my management since the Zoom meeting also had to see. Right now, I can't be kicked off some time.
We're gonna do a roll call. Program.
Eric.
Kevin.
Eric.
I.
Dan.
Pleasure.
Pleasure. To the flag of the United States, America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's a lot of cheap, I'll move forward with our agenda, but if you want to step in any time.
Thank you.
But our next item would be reviewing the special town meeting warrant. And the first, first thing I think to go over or mention to you is the free cash isn't certified by DOR said that it will be certified by, we've got a town meeting, special town meeting. So we can't give a full recommendation on using free cash because it doesn't exist right now. But we can either give an opinion today and hold off and meet again prior to special town meeting and then give a recommendation, or we can give a recommendation today subject to free cash being certified.
I would say if you want, let's go through the recommendations and make it contingent on that being certified at the number that we're working off of. And if not, then we could reconsider some of that free cash. Maybe put into, uh, based appropriate if we be, if we feel that that part. So I'd say maybe the less, lesser, not priorities of us being, but maybe we'll, you know, we'll put those as RNA if free cash version. If RNA just isn't gonna be there because it's too high, then we'll have to push it off to the end. Is that okay? Is that acceptable?
I concur.
Yeah.
The free cash number we're working on right now is 1533. This is saying 533. 1533. Okay. Uh, just a couple other numbers to, to give you guys before we start. Stabilization coming into today was a million four forty nine. Capital stabilization a million oh thirty three.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Second one, capital stabilization?
Yeah.
A million thirty three thousand. All right, rather than reading through our, our spreadsheet, I think I'm gonna just take it down by the draft. More article numbers. Go along by online now. Article two, uh, prior bill for eighty dollars and ninety three cents. And that is a, is a council on aging bill.
Uh, I can read, I can read in the spreadsheet, I apologize, and thought we were gonna have a council on aging bill. But at this point, it's only an ECO bill to, to pay a prior year uh, bill that we received in March uh, to the Mass Rhode Island Veterinary Emergency Room. Uh, so the eighty, so the eighty ninety three is just one bill uh, submitted by the ECO uh, for the Mass Rhode Island Veterinary.
Any questions? Take a motion.
Is that gonna be RNA?
Uh, yes, right.
Is it appropriate?
Yeah. No, uh, I have to keep you a transfer from available funds uh, from the ECO existing. FY twenty two appropriation to pay for it.
Okay.
So it's not coming from free cash, it's coming from their current year budget?
Yes.
Alright.
We're gonna have to let, um, the moderator know, I think that changes the vote.
Okay, I will.
Not exactly certain.
And any sure? Doesn't have to be over two thirds.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you got anything? I've got, okay, sit up to the chair the other day, the town council's ruling on what, on which article is needed, uh, the two thirds. And I like what article I'm actually needed a simple majority. I believe article one was not. Two thirds vote it was a simple majority, but I can confirm and we can I'll absolutely make sure the moderator knows.
And one, I wanna say that we can't pay for it out of our current year budget. It's either gotta be raised appropriately or it paid from free cash. Do not take money from
Right.
a, a budget that we established at annual and move it to a prior year. Is, is my understanding.
All right, I'll, I'll double check that.
Yeah, okay.
I think he's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, he's correct.
So if that was left on the budget, would have been.
So I think our motion to, is to recommend is, is RNA, which is typically what we have done for operating expense, especially of a small picture of this. Um, is RNA. However, if it does come back, we can transfer from the current year then.
Okay.
Um, I, I have a problem reducing the current year budget, right? So, so I think, I think the, the, the motion I would make is, um, to recommend, uh, transferring from the current year budget to the prior year to pay this prior year bill from the animal control officer budget. Uh, and if that is not an option, then we raise it appropriate, the eighty dollars and ninety three cents.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
I oppose.
Article three's, uh, see the town wants to transfer from available funds to not exceed three hundred seventy nine thousand six hundred seventy five dollars to make the payment on the bond of the police station to reduce the tax rate and take any other action thereof. So this is just a normal
True, they could make it for the
Yeah, for free cash.
So moved.
And second, all in favor, opposed? Article four. To raise appropriate, uh, sum of thirty four thousand five forty three eighty two to fund FY twenty two personnel expenses from employees covered under the recently settled police officers local three oh six agreement, take action thereof. This is all for wages in the current year?
It's a balance of, one of its own, the contract that was just said recently approved. So it's a balance of, well, it's a whole facility.
Okay.
So it's
Nothing back into last year.
No.
Any questions? I think, uh, motion to raise appropriate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I oppose.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, Mike?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mr. If, if the, um, just providing knowledge. Even though we all seem to be in agreement that we may recommend this, if the town meeting were to, in general, not just, but in general, were not, did not vote favorably to fund a contract, what happens?
Uh, we would go back to square, uh, yeah, we would go back to the table with the police union. Uh, uh, yeah, based on that, but like at this point, because we have a legal binding, like a legally binding, uh, CBA, we have to advocate for it. Oh, like in an advocate for it, in my opinion, a lot of, like our work in advocating for it is making sure that uh, we in the town are able, are able to support and live by our currimters in the CBA. Uh, and that's why we fought, uh, and work with the union, uh, can, uh, we're very strong. Uh, in our position, uh, uh, yeah, that we in the board of selectmen would support a contract. Uh, that included two percent rates in year one, uh, the two percent years in year two. I mean, a two and a half percent, uh, uh, yeah, cost of living, uh, increase in year three. Like in that framework is, uh, it's fa, uh, it's following the framework that other towns are doing. Uh, and it's very fiscally responsible when appropriate.
That's nothing to do with us?
No.
Number six, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate amount of eleven thousand one forty two eighty one to fund an increase in the health agent salary, take any other action. So this is an increase and an, an increase in, uh, hourly rate and an increase in hours?
Yes, please go on, we're asking that it goes from twenty to thirty five hours.
From twenty to thirty five?
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight to thirty?
Thirty five, you've seen the amount working, that is accurate, that's what we started thinking then. We're also asking for an increase in salary. I think it's, uh, it's a thirty eight eighty six.
Oh, yeah, it would increase from thirty seven oh four to thirty eight eighty six.
We've looked at various, uh, wages for, um, quarter help agents in the area, and this isn't one, but it's actually a little less than what other agents in the area.
It's, the, the same study as in the spring or?
Yes. I, uh, I, 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 I've been looking and assessing the information we look. Uh, I got the study that was performed, um, and provided to the DOR, I think from the spring. Um, and I, I'm in, and actually since then, there's been a study by, uh, uh, actually another community in the area. Uh, uh, I, yeah, we've provided additional contracts. Uh, I can support it, uh, I can also support the information that was provided uh, to the thing coming in the board of selectmen this spring.
Uh, question I have, so, I, I wanna say that the health agent went from twenty to twenty?
Well, twenty, started around twenty seventeen, then twenty, I'm not sure, might have been twenty nineteen, went to twenty eight. And also you got more asset.
The increase in time that they need, not, nothing to do with COVID?
So COVID is, uh, typical, so it'll be hopefully six months a year, we're not talking about COVID anymore. But just increasing the work of practice and everything else. It takes two hours of this time to do a practice, I think you got, who was it, fourteen?
I, yeah, yeah, like sixteen in the month of September alone, just for practice.
How is that changing, number changing?
I think what else, I think what it, but we also, uh, did a study, I was, uh, we, uh, helped agents in the area also did a study. And also showed also a thirty five.
Yeah, everyone's at thirty five.
All right, just one more second. Um, two hours for a practice is actually, would be a new thing for him. Sometimes they can take two to four hours, and I went on one with him. Because I also kind of wanted to see the push and pull for him specifically between the field work and then what's expected of him in the office. And so if you're out and you have, I don't know, I'm gonna make up a number of sixteen divided by four, you have four a week. And they're taking three, four hours a day, and you only have twenty eight hours. I mean, there's not much room left there to even do like the contact business, so. And, and that's the pandemic, so it's not even the regular work that he has. And the bulk of this increase is the hours. Um, so, just getting the rationale, but, um, I think it's been tough for him to keep up with the stuff in the office and also, um, support the field work and people wanting, you know, their ones to be, or renovations, or whatever they're doing to be completed on time, so.
Any questions?
How often in special town meetings has the town board for a significant increase in pay during winter rather than the annual town meeting? How often has that been done?
Not, not, not very often, not, um, we prefer to see these at annual.
The guy, the comms philosophy and procedures. What has been the compass of the guy?
We would
Philosophy about making those appropriations?
I would say in, in general, uh, in general, like Robert said, we, we tend to look at hours in position as something that would be more appropriate as annual than special.
Especially now, because of the fact that, you know, you having to mention contract type tracing. You know, so there's still some COVID going on here, okay? So it might be after this levels out, next June, we have our meeting. This might not even be a situation where he needs the hours anymore. So if we were to vote to pay what we need to right now, and maybe revisit it at annual, I think that would be more appropriate. I think anytime you're gonna increase some, some salary, I think that's a good subject to do as annual. When we're looking at the whole budget, not just a small piece of it.
Right, I totally agree with Kevin. You know, one of the things I would like to present to the townspeople is the fact that this is the annualized increase. When people see this eleven thousand dollars, when we go to annual next year, they're gonna ask, why is this eleven thousand dollars all of a sudden? You know, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars? It's because the eleven thousand dollars had to be annualized for, for the next fiscal year. So when you present them with this, it really needs to be explained that this is only covering from the time it goes into effect. Essentially, you know, you're less, what is it, four months already, right?
You'd be seven months left, I would count, you know, and November for us, if this is valid, I'd be seven months left.
Right. I mean, when did, when would this go into effect, December first?
November for us.
Well, then, that would be eight months, right? November and December plus, we'd be at six months.
Yeah, seven months, actually seven months. Six, yeah, three months, yes.
Okay.
And put that in.
So you, so if you're looking at, this is, this represents two thirds of, of what the annual um, increase really truly is, you're looking at sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars for the next fiscal year. And we like to present the townspeople with that big picture, uh, of that fact. We're not opposed to doing it, um, especially when it's warranted. Um, and I think that we've substantiated it enough here um, between the volume increase of what he's doing on top of the additional paperwork that's necessary to support the volume plus the COVID testing. I'm not I'm not, I'm not on support of this at this time. It's just when we go to town, annual town meeting, when it comes time for discussion, I would expect somebody from the board of selectmen who's, who's put this before us since they own, own the board of health in, in, in this particular role to explain to the townspeople that this is for the remainder of the year, and when we annualize it, it's gonna be this number. Then
The other thing I don't like about, well, let me not say I don't like about it, but I don't agree with the way this written to increase the health agent salary. I mean, I could see, well, I mean, in retrospect, they're increasing salaries in order to go to the number that we're going to. The way this is written right now, if we decide to do the eleven one forty two now eighty one, we've almost agreed to his increase already for next year. Because we would need approval this now. Now, if it was written in such a way that this is to increase the hours we need in order to facilitate the position and to do the work that it currently needs and revisit it at annual, I would feel much more comfortable with it. It seems like if we make a decision tonight, this is done. And as far as I'm concerned, at annual, they share, we are gonna go on an increase because it says it right here. You've given him an increase, or you've given that person an increase. I don't think, I, I, I don't like the way it's written. I think it, it binds us. And we can't even say, hey, we'll, we'll revisit it because this right here pretty much puts it in place. Do you agree or?
Yeah, that makes sense.
That, that's the only problem I have. I'm not in favor of voting on this tonight to approve it myself personally. Um, and I know it can't be changed before we the, 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 the articles already out, we're too close to the, the, the special time meeting, how to change it.
So I believe the articles are in place, but there could be amendments.
Not just that, but whoever reads it, can they just read it and read it in the proper way, not whatever?
It all depends.
They submitted by the board of health, yeah. This is what happened, submitted by the board of health?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the kind of the wording, that doesn't mean, oh, you know, that the language, oh, it has to be recommended?
Right.
I'll possess it at the town meeting.
I would be happy to make a recommendation based on the hour increase and the dollar value that it's gonna cost for time to complete the year, but I'd like to revisit it at annual. I don't wanna commit, because those other towns, they may be paying X amount of dollars, but they may only be working so many hours. And we don't really know yet, until this whole crisis is over, if it's gonna necessitate those additional hours.
Can I, can you back up here for me a second?
Yes, sure.
I also, um, some concerns I have about this specific wording are, not everyone is as deep in the nuances of what the hell they keep assuming and why this is here, right? We are, the way, if I were a resident reading this, I would think that this person is getting eleven thousand dollar raise and not working anymore. Hours.
Yeah, I think that's right, that, that, that's my point. All we're doing is, we're saying, yeah, here's your increase. We're not really stipulating, but on paper here, the information we have, what the town doesn't have is that it's an increase in hours, and that's the way I want it to be. I didn't refer, if we motion it, it's gonna be worded in such that way.
I agree, hundred percent.
Okay? And it's gonna be for the balance of this fiscal year, and it's not gonna carry over. It would be a vote to see if we wanna increase the salary next year. I would be comfortable with that.
So, am I correct though that, uh, it is the board of selectmen that would increase in his hours? In other words, if this figure passes, then we would, at the, our next meeting, this right now is working twenty hours, we, because of the KZAC, he's actually working more hours. But KZAC, you will, he's, uh, man, he's but this doesn't increase his hours, this is, which is trouble standard. So, so even if this passes, we still, I think, go to the board of selectmen
Yes.
and say, we're not increasing your hours to thirty five, not changing the budget, but now to thirty five at whatever rate, or that thirty eight, whatever changes.
Then it's not what you pay for, if we don't
Yeah, we're gonna pay for, this is set up fast for us.
Yes.
Say that, whoever has the vote, just say it's a chairman of the board of health, so we're gonna make the motion. We need to explain to the residents
Yes.
where, where this figure came from, that it's not just
And ideally, yeah, you sort of, you mentioned that would, that explanation would have been provided uh, in the, uh, in the article that, that was submitted by the board of health, because that would, oh, that would have framed it in, oh, in a more, I guess, understandable way.
So it, it really should have read the amount of eleven thousand and change to fund an increase in the health agent hours from twenty eight to thirty five hours.
Right.
Yep.
That, I, I, do you wanna make that motion, motion it that way? I would be comfortable with that, but I'm not comfortable with the way it's kind of written.
Now, this has to be amended on plan four, correct? Okay, we amended here.
I don't think, you guys haven't approved anything yet, have you?
We haven't.
This next, uh, right, if we approve the ones, they, so we can still
It can be fixed up. I don't wanna say we, we should, or can't, it can't be.
Yeah. So, Robert, do you wanna re-lead that motion, do you wanna make it as a motion? Um, just, we'll change
Well, this isn't a motion from us, right? We don't have to make a motion. Our motion would be to not recommend this article as written.
Right.
So let's say, and, and then we would leave it up to the board of selectmen
Yeah.
to amend the article. And then when we get back together, once we get free cash certified, then we can, then we can work the meeting. Then we can recommend, absolutely, the recommendation based on
Right. So at this point, we're just gonna leave it as no recommendation. All right. There we go. Any rate, it's not an idea to be, we don't change it.
Anything for us? I'm sorry. Talking to the open. I totally understand, it was that, the position of the finance committee, we should have been long saying to not, to do these things at the annual town meeting, and you recall, an instance in the past, um, regarding an office manager, the situation was um, remedy at a special time, it's not, I feel like, so we agree. I, I, I say question. Um, I think there were reasons why this couldn't be against the annual town meeting, last annual town meeting. Partly because you are, things needed to be cut, obviously, so this was not a priority. Um, so I just wanted to also let you know that as well, that we, we, as a board, I'm sure, fully understand. Um, and I'm not saying we all agree with this article, I'm sure we don't, but, um, and I respect that very much. Um, but I also respect your process, so I don't want you to have the impression that, um, the board of health or the board of selectmen doesn't respect that position, we do very much. It's more remedy in a situation that we unfortunately couldn't address that.
Well, we understand the situation, but I want that to be there.
So, yeah, uh, yeah, I can understand, like, one of the things that happened, if you recall, during the think come process uh, in the spring as well, uh, on this issue in particular, there was a lot of back and forth. Uh, and there was a conversation with the former chair, uh, during the think come at that time, that especially with uh, the contract tracing going on, with, there's like reimbursements. Uh, 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 yeah, that we, uh, I was prepared to somewhere. Uh, uh, you know, can look at it and, uh, can revisit it and come back to present something like after fall. So we, like, I think the board, I haven't done this lately, but with, I, I'll, like, uh, be, be in, if you will, set a motion to the spring as well.
Right, yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
Does that answer your question? Does that answer your question?
Yes. This is my food. I haven't, it's short.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
All right, so we will hold, hold on article six until, uh, next meeting prior to special. Article seven, uh, to Article seven, do we even need it yet?
That comes from
Yeah.
Because that, this still comes from answer. To see the town, we want to raise appropriate or transfer from available funds in amount of ten thousand fifty seven dollars fifty cents to reverse sewer enterprise fund for unused FY twenty one plate health insurance premiums. I would pay to town that, or take any other action thereof.
So, well, I think we might also
You guys gotta try to, to defer this?
Uh, yeah, uh, yes, my recommendation would, uh, I was going to defer it, what actually happened, uh, after the, uh, after the FY twenty one budget was set and approved by our meeting, uh, the FY twenty one budget included in direct costs, uh, for, uh, for the sewer commission, uh, in the sewer department, uh, to include a full years, to include a full year worth of health insurance, uh, for sewer department employee. Halfway through the process, or halfway through the year, I'm sorry, uh, uh, the employee of the sewer department actually went off the town's health insurance. Uh, that, um, at that time, from what I understand, there was a conversation, uh, with the former town accountant, where the employee on behalf of the sewer department asked, uh, if, that the sewer department could be reimbursed uh, for the FY twenty one health insurance. Uh, yeah, these are costs that wouldn't uh, have to be spent, uh, 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 or the remaining six months of the year. Um, at the time, from what I understand, the town, at the time, at the time from what I understand, the town accountant said no, because the budget was set. And, uh, and the sewer, and the sewer department has reapproached the issue with, uh, can I, um, with an article won't submission now, uh, I, I have looked at it, I understand that the budget was set. I'll put in mind, if we're gonna have a conversation about this, I wanna. I'll, I'll also have a broader conversation about, uh, all the indirect costs that are paid by the sewer department, uh, if they are indeed. Uh. Yeah, and all that, so to just, uh, like, actually just this one issue as a one-off. Uh, without there being any type of indirect policy. Oh, yeah, I get it. So, yeah, if you look at this whole picture more broadly, like, I think that would be helpful, and that's my recommendation.
What other kind of indirect costs do we support as a town for the sewer, um, district?
Uh. Uh, 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 in terms of, in terms of through the enterprise funded building, we provide. Uh, space in the building, which another community's H I four, uh, uh, I could have some type of recognition of. Uh, that belief, uh, uh, in our accounting department as well, uh, uh, our account, uh, our account. Excuse me, our accounting department, uh, kit, uh, uh, handles a lot of their information as well, which we don't charge. So anything for, but to look at all those things and see. Uh, yeah, exactly where we are and if, uh, and if where we are is sufficient, that's great, and if any changes need to be made. Uh, we got, now the time to do that.
Assuming the treasurer collector also.
Yes.
I'm assuming it's nothing that's been addressed during your time. And, uh, uh, the relook at these indirect costs to, for any, I mean, costs go up every year, so.
Uh, yeah, yeah, and I believe it's been a while, so.
Okay. So, uh, I'd guess take a vote to not support, not recommend.
Yes, and just another, we're gonna have to read the prior to town meeting, right? Will you? In three weeks, will that be all set, or is that gonna be something that's pushed off?
See, like, I think. Oh, yeah, like, I think that it's a more long-term work, uh, can, uh, uh, probably involve the financial management view. That is gonna be upcoming as well, so I think that's a more.
It won't even start until.
Exactly, yeah, I don't think it's gonna start in three weeks.
So you not recommend pending additional review?
Yeah, is that a motion?
Yes. Not recommend pending additional review.
Second.
Uh, in favor, opposed?
This is really about policy, though.
Yes.
More than me.
More than me, yeah.
Yes.
If it's a policy thing, does it involve the board of selectmen? Meaning. If something needs, or should actually be, should be changed or altered.
Yes.
In how we approach these things, is that gonna come before this board?
Yes, absolutely, and whether we have a policy that governs it at all. Absolutely.
And I assume we would work with, obviously, the finance.
Yes, so, yeah, this is part of.
I, I think we're just gonna act upon the policy that is established. We, we don't, we don't form policy, that's not, that's not our thing.
See if the, article eight, see if the town will vote to reappropriate some three thousand dollars from special article. Uh, count. Fifteen fifty inspection vehicle, approved in article eleven of the special town meeting on November sixteen, twenty twenty. To raise and appropriate, uh, transfer from free cash, some ten thousand dollars. For a total sum of forty thousand dollars to be expended by the building commissioner to purchase in letter one hybrid vehicle to be used. For inspection services to take action thereof. Cost of vehicle, you know?
No, we can't get the, the, the one that was stolen from, so it's just not available. So the alternative was to look at other manufacturers, and yes, it was, it was a piece.
It's time to get any vehicles ready now, period, so.
Yeah, when, when I came up with that figure, there was one available, but the other will be very.
A lot, uh, are we on this one, if we?
They can't hold it, they can't posit, so.
You might, right, do you mind if I ask what kind of, what brand?
Uh, Chevy E U V, so it's a, it's a long version of the uh, E V.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Cool.
Gives, gives us a little more room for some equipment.
Yeah.
Because of the problem we use it to. So, we'll just hope we can get one.
Well, part of the problem was that the article that, where the money sort of group was very specific, and I believe it said something like a Ford. A city hybrid.
Yeah.
And so, when we were talking about this, um, we obviously thought it would be better not to specifically what. The vehicle itself, you have other manufacturers, so, I, I think you did a good job on that.
Yeah.
How about you, Al? It would be nice to have on that, and that cruiser is tired, so.
That was tired, I mean, that was tired, you know, that.
Yeah, exactly, and it's not for purpose, I would.
Alright, so, that's another one.
And so, so my, my question here is that, the, I understand the intent of nominating the vehicle in here. But that changes what the townspeople voted on that.
Last November.
Last November, so I think there needs to be another article inserted in here. That rectifies that, so that townspeople can first vote on changing it from the Ford hybrid to any electrical vehicle or. Um, as determined by, in this case, does it say in here the building commissioner, you got a building commissioner? Okay. And then this article would then follow it, which is to fund using what was prior, funded prior. Plus the additional ten thousand.
Because otherwise, the ten would be free to use on any, but the thirty would still have to be on.
Be on that, that's a good one.
No, we can't get. So, it's, it says reappropriate.
Yeah, but, but the, the reappropriate just really means take it from this one.
Vote to another.
Vote to another vote, but, but that's.
These are important.
If, if, if the old one had said just an electric vehicle to an electric vehicle, now you're talking to equal parts, that's what the townspeople voted on. When you take it from the description of one to a generic, you're, you're changing.
So is that something, is that something we can do?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Where it's not solidified, yeah?
Do we just, we have to do it for our meeting, okay?
Yeah.
Just when we take our votes, next month.
Uh, yeah, like, I'm just wondering, like, I'm just wondering, but if we're reappropriating the thirty dollar.
The thirty.
I'm sorry, thirty thousand. Uh, uh, and those funds are gonna be combined, uh, for a total sum of forty thousand dollars. Uh, for the purchasing letter of one. Hybrid vehicle, wouldn't the latter part, uh, like, of that article take the place?
On the first time.
Yeah, can supersede. The article that was approved by town meeting last year because. Because of the one we appropriate.
Yeah, I just, I see what you're saying. I think that's something for our attorneys to determine.
Yeah.
There, there was, within the last two years, there was a article that we had to do this. Two, with, they pulled it back, changed it, and then the next vote, the next article was.
Right, the two articles.
Yeah.
Yeah, one to reappropriate it, and then one to give the forty, the full of.
Yeah.
To the other one, taking thirty from, the thirty reappropriated, and then taking another ten. Yeah.
So can we get something from council before excellence is needing from this?
So, yeah, that, oh, yeah, absolutely, is it, oh, yeah, I would have thought if I come, oh, yeah, if I come, so be.
That's, yeah.
Huh?
We catch that when they renew it.
Oh, yeah, like, I would have thought I would have jerked that up.
Yeah, because, because this, the way the article reads, in town is called inspectional vehicle, but if they didn't have the wording from the special. From the article, from, from the, from the prior meeting that said it spells out.
What it was.
What it was, then now they'd be probably caught unless they were going back.
Alright, sure.
Yeah.
But if we suit the council and they say.
If they should, yeah, yeah.
They agree, then we still have time to fix it.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, no, I'm still okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's fine.
Wow.
But in, in terms of the intent of the article, Robert.
Is that to have this conversation now, and then we have a reason to cancel it, which they have a one, we have a funded vehicle.
Oh, good.
Oh, yeah. So in terms of the intent of the article, the, the first article really should say, we're gonna. Reappropriate this thirty thousand dollars for. For the, for the purchase of a Ford hybrid to any type of.
Right.
Hybrid vehicle. And then the next article should be raise and appropriate for free cash, depending upon what we decide here. Ten thousand dollars due to the lack of inventory, increasing price, availability, all that, whatever, however we want to term.
Yeah.
Um. Give me some.
Jeff, thank you, thank you. It's just that article, we won't have to vote on, because that's just. Changing the wording, right? We don't have to give a recommendation.
We don't have to give a recommendation. Well, do we have to give a recommendation? No, because that one is still set aside, yeah, just.
Well, on thirty, we're actually put on the additional.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, additional.
Yeah.
And the same thing.
Okay, so I put that check in council.
In regard to that article. The only thing we're really voting on is to see if the town will vote to. Transfer from free cash a chunk, some ten thousand dollars.
Right.
To be expended by the building commissioner to purchase in letter one hybrid vehicle to be.
Right.
Services. This, do you, do you even mention article eleven? This is combined with article eleven of special town meeting on November sixteenth. For a total purchase of forty thousand.
I think you don't have to, because it's, it's referencing back to that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that could be that hot out of the long, I just think. You know, as Robert said, and just to make sure we, we, we covered the, the, the specific.
Mm-hmm.
Of why it's being done, and it was sent to you, because you could have had the people, not that anybody said, oh, you know, I really want that for.
Yeah, I, I think that, I think article eight really means to see, you know, sending something to the effect of, to see if the town will vote to supplement. Um. The sum of thirty thousand dollars from the special article approved at town meeting with a transfer. Of ten thousand dollars.
Right.
I think that's really what we're, we're after here, right?
Yeah, because it's really reappropriated from the article before.
Right.
Right, so we should approve that, because if that doesn't pass, then you're not gonna do anything else.
Yeah, just.
Yeah.
Before, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. So that is fair debate.
Is that a motion?
I think we have to wait to see how this, it's re-represented, but I.
So, so at this point, the whole.
But I, I think, but I, but I think from our, the free cash number that we're working with.
Yeah.
We should account for the ten thousand dollars.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So we'll definitely keep that in. So.
Alright, article nine. See if the town will transfer from free cash some, some actually exceed thirteen thousand to be expended by the board of selectmen to purchase. An installation of one high efficiency HVAC unit at the town hall.
So this is the third of the units that we knew were going to fail. We replaced two of them last year. There are four units over there, one services the vault, that was a good, good operation. This is number three. Of the three that we knew were bad, we replaced two, and this is the last one. It did fail, it's not working.
That's, this is a replacement, not a new system.
Yeah, replacement, but we are replacing them with high efficiency.
Yeah.
Systems.
These aren't split systems, these are regular systems, right?
These are regular systems, regular force, non-air systems, uh, gas-fired, and they're ninety seven percent efficient, so.
Yeah, nice.
And we want the train, we want a good construction, so.
Sure.
Uh, accessories, and the town management's office.
Yeah, I really don't matter if you're in the accessories office.
The portals that we bought, no, we, we use those, so that will be, we use that itself. That's good.
They paid for them, so.
They did.
Um, any problems getting them in? Before it gets too cold?
Uh, the heat still works, so I'm not so concerned.
Yeah.
If we have to wait, especially with the, you're live with contractors right now, um, then as long as we get to the spring, um, we will be.
That's a good question.
I didn't wanna shake it down and make sure it works, but no, I'm just gonna check on it, so.
Any other question?
That'll be best, he has.
I'll make a motion to accept out of the nine minutes.
Is that a, transfer from free cash?
Yes.
Second, all in favor?
opposed?
Article ten, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate some of fifteen thousand dollars to be expended by the board of selectmen to purchase cybersecurity insurance, insurance policy. And necessary equipment and accessories to establish a secure two-factor authentication process for town employees.
Yes. So one of the things I did, if it's okay, Mr. Kim, uh, I'm a part of, I'm a part of our intern process. Oh, yeah, like, in the new process that we moved to in June, uh, I met, uh, I met with our intern agent. Uh, and I found out that we had, uh, you know, issues with our, uh, with our current cybersecurity. Uh, uh, coverage and what it would actually cover, uh, uh, can we run out, uh, actually to. Oh, yeah, I come and show on that, uh, he provided a quote which was, uh, uh, can I be high? Uh, uh, can, uh, can we, uh, can we reach up to my through the MMA, uh, can we do, uh, can we do have a quote at this point that is much. Uh, uh, like much. Oh, yeah, it's much more reasonable and sustainable because it is affecting operational costs, um, uh, like in. And the policy itself, uh, has been quoted to cost approximately, uh, ten thousand dollars a year with the additional fee going for the multi-factor authentication.
Would this cover us for ransomware stuff, or would it recover?
Yes.
What, what would it cover us for? Just to get our computers back and working? To replace the computers, just the ransomware damages them? How much does it cover us for?
So all of the above, we would be covered, uh, uh, we would be covered, we would be covered for like one million dollars for incident. Uh, can, uh, can three million dollars in the I G B A per year, uh, can, uh, additionally. Uh, additionally, one of the major things is because we do, uh, uh, actually have really good backups and like a network. Oh, and all the bylaws, thankfully, we're really good there, uh, however, like. Uh, however, if we, uh, as a town, any of our vendors were breached, uh, we als, we also have legally required. Uh, like, a bunch of legally, a bunch of legally required classes and liability as well, since. Again, the policy would cover that as well, which, uh, uh, is especially important, uh, can, uh, can we look at what happened in New Bedford a few years ago? Uh, can we look at the social engineering issue that happened in San, um, San Juan two years ago, where. Uh, yeah, like a proposed vendor, uh, he built a relationship with a town employee, uh, they, they asked a period of a few months. He talked the employee into, uh, uh, yeah, like actually wiring the money over to him. Uh, you know, and that is, uh, uh, and it's problematic for money and everything, but that term, uh, could actually call social engineering, that's covered. Uh, to a policy like this as well. And I also did a survey, uh, uh, of, uh, like, of all the local communities, uh, can, uh, can I buy three around this side? This, this, and I also did a survey, uh, uh, of, uh, like, of all the local communities, uh, can, uh, can about three around us have it?
And now we have a consultant firm that does our, uh, is now what it was there, feel the same thing, that.
Yeah, he recommended.
He's the one who recommended it.
Uh, so, yeah, we have extremely strong firewalls.
Yeah.
We have extremely strong backup protection.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but it's all the other liability associated with this.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it just takes one email that somebody opens.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, being victim of this at one time with a large company, uh, I definitely understand it and support it, just get ready other.
Yeah.
Get ready other.
Is the the authentication cost, is that an annual or is that a?
That's, that's a one, that's a one time, so the only operational cost would be about.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Yeah, so I I would motion to recommend ten thousand dollars as raising appropriate five thousand from um, free cash.
What would we do before?
I was all.
Article fifteen, come on.
Let me ask a question. It's a procedural question. A town vote, when you have an article that part of it will be raised appropriately, which takes a two-thirds of and fund for a social free cash, how is that presented? It's two separate votes or?
So like I believe in the letter that we, uh, like actually got, uh, uh, actually got from legal counsel early this week. Uh, like our raising appropriate is a majority vote, uh, uh, if it's, and it's any changes in bylaws that require recruit there.
I believe it's the zoning bylaws.
Yes.
So it's just a simple majority vote, one vote, one vote, at the same, same vote, correct?
Right.
So on the same vote and the same motion, and it would be the funding sources would be outlined in the motion.
The stabilization funds, take the two-thirds.
Yes.
Take the two-thirds to take that one, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Minister, so I'm using the whole version of the special art article, I apologize.
Did you say thirty?
Yeah, and what was, why did the press come down?
Uh, yeah, like, so like the initial vote that we received, uh, was actually twenty-six thousand dollars a year.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, for many reasons, I just wasn't happy with that.
Not a year, just that one time?
No, the one-time authentication.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, is about, uh, is about five thousand dollars, but the, for the premium for the policy itself.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, was quoted at between twenty-five and twenty-six percent. Oh, you know, oh, you know, and that, oh, oh, okay, my view, that's not uh, oh, yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not sustainably operationally, so that's when, oh, yeah, we showed and I go in my quote.
Thank you.
So you wanna do ten, five, ten, uh, raise and appropriate, five K free cash, right?
Right.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So I don't know, just to give you an idea, usually if it's a one-time thing, we like to push it through free cash as opposed to raise appropriate. And where it's gonna be an ongoing operational cost, that's why we left the ten thousand dollar insurance policy in the operating reason.
So, I appreciate that.
You all.
Um, okay, so the dollar amount's different, okay. Uh, Article eleven. Is is just a difference between the proposed cost and the recommendation.
Yes.
To see if the town will vote to, uh, transfer from free cash some not to exceed forty thousand dollars to be expended by Dayton Trails Committee to fund feasibility study to provide viable options, initial concepts to create, to connect the future two-mile T C R suites gold trail to the north and south with on-road and off-road trail options to connect the town of Dayton to Tonton River Trails Network, north across the three-mile river to Tonton, and south along the waterfront to Somerset. Town administrator recommended thirty thousand for this as opposed to forty.
Yes.
And this meaning all this land is townland?
No, no, part of the feasibility study, like, uh, could, uh, could actually be, uh, could I uh, would actually be assessing the town, so the non-town land, uh, yeah, and looking at uh, uh, down, uh, 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 avenues that we might be, uh, able to work with the non-town owners to uh, like explore possibilities, this, uh, is especially evident, uh, like, uh, uh, for some of the dad uh, behind the co-op building. Uh, as, uh, as it is in the old princess house, that area, uh, is especially in question. Uh, I do, I do know trails, uh, last year, last fall, they went to CPC, they asked the CPC uh, if the CPC would be interested in funding event, uh, uh, and the CPC said no. Uh, in the spring, uh, the trails came forward to the town, whether we weren't out of, whether we weren't out of the request. Uh, 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 there was a lot of discussion about the trails network, uh, 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 from talking down to government events that I believe. So in the importance of it, but where we were in June, uh, we, uh, uh, we didn't really know how we've been focused up the year, so we deferred it to, uh, actually now.
Are they planning on on paving this or, I mean, what's what's the end result? I mean, that that's my question. What's what's the end result going to be? And and then also, do they have any statistical or data, information or data behind that shows how how often the existing trails are used? Because if we if we have minimal usage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're talking about putting forty thousand into, uh, a study that's then gonna tell us we have to deal with X number of property owners, go buy a whole bunch of land or get needs men on the land.
Mm-hmm.
And then carve out the trails? I I mean, I I'm 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 sorry, but but I look at the condition of our school properties and the fact that that we can't even put in um, uh, uh, an access road, um, for to ease the traffic congestion, and we're talking about recreational type activity here. And I know that's just, just, you know, my my personal point of view as a towns person, but from a, um, from a finance committee, quarter, member committee point of view, I I think there are a lot more pressing issues than this.
I understand.
The question I have is, in June, it was a request for thirty thousand dollars. Three months later, it's the request was forty thousand dollars. Why should they pay ten thousand more dollars in three months?
Uh, 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 yeah, so like the explanation I would see from the trails committee chairman is they wanted more flexibility is based on how any proposals came in. So I think it's on my recommendation, I mean, the, so it was understood, uh, in the spring, that they could resupply thirty thousand. Uh, and that's where I am.
So I'm not, certainly not, uh, advocating to you either, right? Um, but I just wanted to give you a little bit, so I have this very same question as you, and I asked it at the board of selectmen's meeting. One of the priorities that has been, um, told to the town through various surveys that have gone out via mail from different committees, and that's what do you care about, what do you wanna see? One of the things that did come back, and I totally agree with you a hundred percent on access road. That's why we traveled this road together on the project, um, which is it, it's a staggering amount of money. Uh, but part of the reason that this is on here is because residents have overwhelmingly said, when the open space committee has sent out mailers to each household have said, we want more trails and, you know, recreational spaces, so I totally agree with everything he said at the point of view of that. Um, that's why it's on here, um, so I'm just also, I'm sorry, you know that as well. One last point, um, if I may, just. Um, part of the reason why I wasn't supportive of this at the annual town meeting, because this is also on the, um, the warrant then, was because we needed to, at that time, fund the shared streets and spaces projects, because we weren't sure we were gonna get back grant. So we didn't back that back grant. Now, I don't know how money works, it's not, you know, now we have a hundred twenty thousand dollars that we can do something else with. But I do lean toward this, understanding that it is a priority of the residents, knowing that we are trying to get friends to free up money, that to do things that normally we may not wanna ask taxpayers to fund, so, just something we might, um, sort of address here, I'll add as well. But I totally agree, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of the study, so I'd like some more information on that as well. One thing that I would like to remind you of is the fact that your semi-private group that receives some funding from private organizations and some funding from the taxpayers will get this down. And they have it before that for the request to CPC, that CPC can go down the request of thirty thousand dollars.
Do we know why they? For it then?
It's the only thing that was that I know, I can't speak for them, I represent all of that group. But the one piece, the unknown piece, is still an issue today. This is random kind of a little town, that there is a big piece of land that a property owner in Sunset who has repeatedly said no. So when you're trying to connect a trail, have a landowner is a stumbling block. It's an access point to, you can fill that on the trail, but to fill it in public, it it is a stumbling block. It would be a lot easier if we were in possession of that access to the trail.
So Mr. Grof's point, I have a question. You said that the trails committee put this part on the forward. Did they got the signatures from taxpayers? Or was it just received by the something?
Something like that.
Okay, yeah, so they didn't got all the signatures, okay, okay.
No, it's.
I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a choice, I'll get.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, that's a good point. I wanna, when I, I'm just talking general, people said they wanna see trail. I'm not saying, you know, it's a survey document, but the specific article.
Yeah, and I'm not saying I'm quoting just the item, but it was submitted to the, to the signature, but the signatures, and now we give the certification of public support.
Just so you know, we, uh, we've asked that that every public, uh, meeting, all the articles, October twenty-fifth, all the players have been Friday come that week, so the public can ask any questions that they want. So, understand that we'll be talking about this next week, so maybe we should invite the trails committee.
Yeah.
So answer any questions that we may have.
Yep.
Uh, and then we're all here for the public to hear.
Thank you. But that's not too much. We'll get it, so.
Uh, Article eleven, I'm a little vote, no recommendation, uh, until we get more information. I'd like to know if there's any private money that's been gifted already as well um, to support the private. And to Jim's point, you know, this has been something that has been signed by residents, has something they'd love to see in town and find out how much support there really is for.
So your motion is to?
My motion is to not make another recommendation.
I second that.
Uh, like, would you be able to ask those questions if they come?
Yeah, like, uh, yeah, like, I have to talk to, like, that was in the follow-up, would it come as well?
Right.
Yeah.
Is that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
I, I.
Opposed? So technically a hold or?
Yeah, no recommendation, no recommendation.
Is this Article twelve, is that gonna be, we're just gonna wait on that, but like?
So, yeah, oh, yeah, at this point, this is an article, uh, that had been submitted actually jointly by the police. I can fire, but I'm working with them, I can working with that kind of gentleman. Uh, oh, yeah, uh, uh, I can go into the requirements for APRA, uh, the rescue plan funding, I believe we should be able to fund that today.
So you don't need, you don't need anything from us on that?
I'm, I'm, I know, I know, now at this point, it will probably go forward to capital outlay, but yeah, special committee, no.
Okay.
So there's not gonna be a motion on this one? Isn't it gonna be on there or are we thinking out?
Uh, I haven't, uh, otherwise it can be just pass over.
Okay. That that would be cleared up before the meeting.
Yes, so we're just gonna leave this as a no motion.
I think that's.
Yes.
To Article thirteen, see if the town will vote to, uh, transfer from free cash some not to exceed a hundred fifty thousand dollars for engineering design services for Pleasant Street Bridge reconstruction project.
We had some money, we reached out to this, right?
Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, for the past, geez, the battle fought out of the last two to three years, we've been helping we represented for that on this.
Right.
Uh, for the superstructure replacement, uh, uh, in the white, actually, at the beginning of COVID, I believe, the funding the seven, the seven hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars in funding was already actually under budget being approved by the board of city check. Uh, then, uh, our reason has broke loose, uh, the plans were put on board here in town, um, and and the plans were put on board at the state level as well. Uh, however, when the plans were put on board, uh, at the town level, one of the things that was understood, uh, uh, is that the uh, is that the town had to fund the engineering fully project. Uh, uh, we haven't done that yet, uh, so we had a meeting, uh, and what's like, we had a meeting with representative there, uh, say, uh, Tuesday night. Uh, can we, uh, can we convey to her the importance of the project and the funding for it? Uh, uh, in the meantime, our engineering class is still something to be defined.
Funny, this class gets us funding from the state.
Uh, hopefully, yeah, yeah, apart from my training, yeah, like, it actually puts us in the game and chores around in the game.
Love to show that, yes, we're serious about from the quote. Now, that, um, bridge is pretty unsafe, from what I understand, it's not closed, but it's to the point where it may happen.
Okay, so yes, so yes, it does have a posted limit.
Right.
I believe seven, ten, I wanna say?
Yes. Think so.
Would be slightly higher than that, but.
Not the larger, that tends to be, boys.
That's bad.
Hey, new trail.
Yeah. Now, from free cash, free cash.
No, no, it could be a three.
Any questions? Any questions on that?
Uh, so. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for planning and permanent costs to redesign the driveway and the apricot cabin, and have a maintenance facility, that I'm not sure Dayton Middle School would take any action there, but this is, this is in addition to the eighty-five thousand net was approved at the annual.
Last, last question, question.
Last question, okay. So, uh, it turned out, so this number reflects wetlands that was unforeseen when the original project scope was was laid out. We always knew that there would be wetlands to contend with, and the original amount had a number to deal with wetlands. What we found out after delineation was that the wetlands were more involved than we we thought. And that's to require federal state files, so that's what this number is for, is to go through those federal state files. I recorded the D N S, we need to get involved, um, and then the T P, we need to get involved. And, um, we we really thrashed and tried to relocate the roadway, et cetera, et cetera, it's just unfortunate the science dictating, um, this course. So, and Mr. Grof, this may get into this a little deeper, but. So, and Sluckam's office may get into this a little deeper, but since this project has had a full met esteem for the past year, I stand here and receive a letter from Superintendent from the school district that maybe says otherwise, and that this project may not be best for the school department. They came to us by surprise because none of the discussions that we had previously, and I'm involved, Berry, Administrator, Sluckam's office have involved the school department in earnest. We had several site visits. One of them was attended by maybe thirty people, so.
The plan for all the change to support the project.
Right. Based on, there was, there was a, a conceptional plan based on that meeting, which was very fruitful. We, we went back to the plan, made some changes, and came up with, you know, something that fed and met the needs and also met the needs of the school department. So now, in the eleventh hour, we're finding out that maybe the school department does not want to involve with this. To that, we had a meeting with Selectmen, and indicated that the problem is not going to go away. And I think Sluckam Chico summed up very cleverly, said the taxpayers will decide whether they want to support this or not. It's not really up to the Selectmen or anything on the debate, whether it's worthy, it's just whether or not this project has validity with the taxpayers. If they don't mind staying in line for extended period of time, then so be it.
This was a question of parents.
This was a, a part of our issue.
So I, I have a couple of questions here. So the first one is, is this, this may not even be a question, but the way the regional agreement is written, if I'm not mistaken, is that this is a capital cost for Dighton schools, it will be paid for by the town of Dighton. I do not believe that this school district really necessarily has a say in this.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yes. They don't agree with you.
Well, they're not, they're not gonna be footing a dime with us.
Correct.
So. And in, in, quite honestly, if that's the way they want to stand on, then we need to start asking them to reimburse us for the modular that we put out there, you know, things of that nature, right? The second question I would have, and, you know, I'll look to our building commissioner, but I, I would also, would, would love to talk to our our, our planning board. Why are we not looking at raising taxes for commercial developers who are the reason for the influx of all these new houses? And, I mean, one-off houses, yeah, not a problem, right? But when we're starting talking about building twenty, thirty, forty houses, and we're breaking, we're talking about increasing the infrastructure, why aren't we having some of these developers pay, pay their fair share, not just for, for that, but for our police department, our fire department, our, our schools? Why are we not looking at increasing like those, um, fees, fees and/or taxes for, for that?
A lot of our goal was spent because of the four Ds, and we can't assess that. We can't even talk, we haven't got the four Ds, we can't even talk about how to protect the schools, fire, police, the cost of expenses, all that, so. But I do agree, I think we can assess those elements for, so for example, for additional fee, for all that's in, how it's going to impact the town.
So I have response. About eight years ago, none of the current lawmakers were on board. I brought suggestions to Sluckam about implementing impact, which is done in other parts of the country, which gets affixed to the building permit for new construction, be it residential or commercial. Mostly on residential side because of the variance in infrastructure. So at that time, I had done a quick calculation, and with the permit counts at what they were, we probably would have almost a million dollars in apartments right now. Unfortunately, the Selectmen at that time did not support the impact rate, so the, the discussion really didn't go anywhere. But I can tell you that it might not be something that's talked about in New England, but in other parts of the country, it's, it's something that's widespread, works exactly this type of problem, where we have added houses, we have added traffic, and we not have a problem with the intersection, which is going to take a multi-layered response to try to deal with. And, you know, this particular project is one. So I, I would agree with you, and I don't know if that's a discussion that we want to start having again. It's unfortunate that we missed that amount of money up to this point, but it doesn't mean that we don't, right, it doesn't mean that we don't try to talk about it when we vote.
Maybe that's a conversation for the, we need to join, um, Buildings Committee, do that planning, et cetera, et cetera, what is left, huh?
Too.
You were?
Yeah.
You just, you're a hard answer.
So the last point I want to make about this, and, and this goes to Sluckam Chico's point in particular about keeping it up to the taxpayers, whether they support this or not. But the problem that Dighton has and always has had up to this point is the fact that we never have a shovel ready project when a great opportunity might come up. And case in point, the Pleasant Street pro- bridge project, we need to get those plans, or to be able to potentially receive grant fundings. Now, I don't know if we can get grant fund with this, you know, but the fact that we don't have plans tells us we can't even apply for. So, you know, at some point, and, and, you know, I want to commend Roger Brendan and I'm sure Mullen, who are really catapulting the capital planning part of Dighton. Because now we can start to look at, hey, these are the projects, these are the projects that have liability, they're supported, let's get the engineering done, so we have all these projects on the shelf, and when a great opportunity comes up, we can capitalize on. So in not doing that, we, we lose that chance.
I've got a question on that. I mean, we, I guess, partly stated. Superintendent Azar wasn't be available for a call, and he emailed Mike and said that he couldn't stay on any longer past seven, so he left.
Okay.
If the school can, we, if we, if the town people decide to go ahead with the thirty thousand dollars and we finish this, and the school committee continues to say, we're, we, we don't want you to do anything, we don't want you to do anything, but the people Dighton want something done, we would move forward.
So I was fortunate enough to attend a Dighton PTO meeting the other night, where this issue was brought up by concerned parents, and so I wanted to make a point about the grants first. It is true, and this point was raised by parents, that we, there's a guarantee, even if we're shovel ready, we'll get a grant. And my response is, you still have to go through the same process. You just may get a grant to fund it, or the taxpayers fund it. You also don't have to proceed if you don't get the grant. You could put the project that was already in on the policy, which we've been trying over a couple of years now to progress the ball, the ball forward on this project. It takes time, so there's no harm or foul. I just want you to be aware, there is no guarantee to get a grant, but I always feel like the first option should be to try to get a grant, rather than ask taxpayers to fund it. It's just, it's a no brainer for me. So that's how I feel about that. I understand that things cost money. I understand that we received a letter that the school committee had reservations, but what I told Mrs. Kucha and Mrs. Terry, who were there from the school committee, is that this isn't an issue where it's the town versus the school committee. We all know something has to be done. What we're arguing about, I shouldn't say arguing, the issue right now is I think that the school committee got a little nervous about the price tag. So I understand that. My position is, plans may be a little bit changed. We haven't sent the entire eighty five thousand dollars. We know, regardless of whether this article passes or not, we have to come back to the table with the school committee, just like we did the first time, where we changed the plans to incorporate their concerns for the property. The third thing that they brought up, which we hadn't heard of in many years, gentlemen, is the possibility of some sort of new infrastructure, and this is brought up by the parents' president. Now, I'm very sensitive to maybe not wanting to touch the infrastructure, if it may be changed or something like the avenue, so I totally understand that. My concern is, we've already been waiting three or four years for some sort of study to be done by that building study committee, and it hasn't. So I almost feel like we're in a, we're back at the beginning, in the sense of if they want to get involved again, we're back as they were, waiting a couple of years. Meanwhile, the traffic is still an issue. But I want to dispel that, that there's some sort of friction between the two. There's not. We know we need to talk to them, regardless of how it's part of the process, so I also wanted to let the community be aware of that as well.
The other important point too is, the wetlands did not create the price tag. Tom Ferry and I always had, from day one, this was going to be a million dollars or more. We knew it eclipsed a million dollars. So the million and a half that we're talking about right now is not far off from what we discussed. Will it be some impact on price based on the Army Corps of Engineers feedback and state feedback? Possibly, yes. We don't know that yet, because we don't go down that road. And to Sluckam's office's point, we don't want to do anything that doesn't work for the town taxpayers, both from a traffic perspective and from a school perspective. So if there needs to be an evolution in the, in the design, running to make and hit all those, all those points, we're gonna do that, and we, we've done it once already. So we're not gonna do something, just say, hey, you asked for it, we get it to do. You know, it's gonna be an open dialogue, and if it changes, it changes. But at least we have the funding, or if the taxpayer is supporting it, we'll have the funding to go forward, knowing that this is necessary for the community in that project.
I do have two questions I want to ask. The first question, and as a direct result of the comments, they, we all are aware that the elementary and the middle school are close to, if you want, to capacity. If there is a need, and we know there is a need, that a critical finance to put on a condition for the rest of that property, what will that do to that road and its location and the certainty that one point five million dollars or more to spend on it won't be to be altered and spend more? And going along with that, from my experience, like, with the elementary school, my experience is in time. If there is any type of road, any type of reconstruction or new construction on that land, could the school building assistance program assist in paying that? The other concern that I have, and this is actually more a question. Has the school department looked at administrative, concealer things that they could do differently to help with that traffic pattern? Or, example, dismissal times, moving dismissal times. So that one actually dismiss much later than the middle, so you don't have arrival time dismissal times with an interval of three that would alleviate the load. I understand, I understand the concerns, the safety issue, I guess. But what bothers me is the cooperation of groups working together. And also, um, some of the comments from some parents that have acted me regarding, you know, that PTO meeting, has hardly done all we can before we spend a lot of money. I'd be curious to see on liberate to town administrator, one of them has asked all the departments to submit a review, a capital out, a capital out lay proposal. And I believe, when we get this on, it's a, so what we come to concern, the, the big picture, the library, bike station, we, with this project, it are the priorities, and we don't know that it is. So there are a lot of questions that, the question for the humans. I've heard it mentioned, we go up to the bogus. We were given a task by the bogus. In your case, the town, all right. You were entrusted because of your expertise in making financial, giving financial advice to bogus. So that's, and what I must do. I'm against this logic. I'm just concerned about the planning and the lack of organization of it.
Uh, I, I agree. This has been very organized, extremely organized. There's been a lot of dialogue in the school department. The only disconnect came when that email was sent out the other night. So please, I, I, I respect your opinion, I really do, but it has been anything but disorganized. The only disorganization came when that letter was submitted to Administrator Mullin. That's the first time that I heard anything discontent about the project. Up until that point, there was nothing but praise from members of the school department.
In that meeting that we had at the site, about thirty of the officers, before you came to select them, that Azar was there, the school committee chairman was there, and the other administrators of the school were there. Were they any special requests that they can, quite frankly, do stuff of course?
Correct, correct. I wanted to, if, if, I just also wanted to add, because it predates your time on the board selection, how we have asked police, for example, to go over there and to direct traffic throughout, you know, for the last year and a half. When the, I just, it's not changing the, the behavior, it's not changing the traffic. When the police officer is not there, everything happens again. So it's more of a temporary solution. There needs to be, and again, I, I agree with you. I'm, I'm also not advocating in any way, I'm just saying that something has to give, is every temporary solution that we've done doesn't end up with long-term success. And the police officer is not there, the driver's there. So we are trying, we're just trying.
I, I don't, I disagree with that part of your statement, but the rest of it I agree with. We're certainly not gonna do anything to spend taxpayer dollars if it's gonna impede on the needs of the school department down the road. They have been pulled for what they need. We did configure the roadway in certain ways to, so to allow additions to the buildings. But if those needs have changed, and after that letter the other night, I don't know what to think anymore. So those discussions have started, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And just so you know, the school committee has, or this is Kucha and Mrs. Terry, informed the meeting that night that they intend to reconvene men's debt, who released the first report where they made forecasts on the occupancy numbers and all that. So they are gonna reconvene them and reconvene the building study committee, but we should be honest, that that's gonna take years, you know, to do anything. If you definitely want to do that project, we drive that.
I've done that, because maybe that's gonna take a while. All right.
One, one question for you, sometimes we, with the, in the conversation with the two school committee members, is it, did they give you any indication on this particular project, whether they?
They didn't, I, I, I didn't, I was, I'm gonna be honest, I wasn't their lobbying anyone, so I didn't ask that question. But when I stated what I was stating here tonight about regardless whether this article patches or not, we have to come back together so we can be on the same page, they all agree with that, so I don't know if that helps you, but.
I, I mean, we need to do something, and if the wetlands and other features of it have to be explored further, we have to explore, we have to explore. And regardless, if we. We have to explore. And regardless if we, you know, approve or, or make the recommendation, and then you go back and sit with the committee and you realize we're not gonna have to spend the money because, you, you know, for whatever reasons they bring to the table, then we don't spend it, you know? But at this point, I, I think we have to move forward with doing something there. Um, I don't think we're gonna be doing anything with the building within the next five to six years because we put on those additions that I was just carrying is five or six years. So hopefully that'll be true and we won't have to talk about that five or six years. But god, if something gets hurt or killed because we haven't taken the appropriate action, um, then that would, you know, kind of fall back on us not making the decision. I wanna make the decision. And if there's no other questions, I'm gonna motion to approve.
I just have a question. When are the lease on those modules up?
They're not really secret.
Yeah, that was also something that we've discussed at the school committee with the, with the task force that we had. And it was, it made more sense to purchase them than to lease them. You know, you could have additional uses for them in the future. So I'm gonna, uh, motion to approve Article 14.
I'm gonna recommend.
What did I say? I, uh, to recommend. That was slated for free cash, correct?
Yes. Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Post.
That's all of these things.
Okay.
Yeah, all of these, all the way through that are all one.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So Article 15, I, I get the transfer article with the number, I, I got funding and transfers in the current fiscal year budget.
Some are raised unappropriately, some are free cash.
Yes. If it's easy, I can walk through every one of them.
So we're just taking 10 grand from free cash and everything else between us.
Yes. Uh, everything else except for the transfer.
Of the 5,000.
Yes.
For the common budget.
I, yeah, and that actually gives the offset, uh, from the reserve fund transferring us, uh, from us not having an account in, uh, for, oh, I, I got a month or so, uh, we were, uh, we were able to absorb some of that. Transfer, I like $5,000 from the personnel to expense account. Uh, and offset the reserve fund transfer by, uh, good.
So were all these expenses that were underfunded, were they just underfunded for the year?
I just, I can walk through every one of them if it's easiest. Uh, so the public health, the public health nurse funding, uh, we, uh, we have traditionally budgeted $3,000 a year. Uh, especially with COVID and the need for contact tracing. Uh, it's three, uh, if we get exactly how many hours we, uh, the, but just, 3,000 divided by 30, 3,000 divided by 35 dollars an hour is what we, uh, happen by doing for available hours. Uh, one of these things that have skewed, and that actually has skewed all of our information, uh, is the fact we have had a very, 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 uh, the very part-time, a very part-time public health nurse who we, who we have essentially shared with other communities. Uh, so the amount of time our former, our former public health nurse has been able to, uh, actually dedicated that in, uh, 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 yeah, uh, has been even less than what we budgeted for, which, like, is why, which is why over the last year, we have had a, we've had a health agent and an office manager in the board of healthcare contact tracing. Oh, and ideally the contact tracing in other towns is done, uh, actually by, I buy a public health nurse, um, who, who has, who has access and is certified with a M A V E N, uh, which is a state epidemiology network. Uh, so what we're hoping to do with this, uh, is funding additional hours for the public health nurse, uh, taking away the obligation, uh, the responsibility from our health agent, uh, putting it, uh, actually, uh, uh, actually where the public health facility, where it belongs. Uh, so that, is that, uh, the accounting offset, uh, is, uh, as I mentioned, we're taking the $5,000 that we've saved, that we saved in the interim, uh, we're proposing a transfer there to offset, uh, the, the reserve fund transfer, um, uh, to, uh, to fund the accounting and accounting services as well. Uh, so what we would be proposing to, uh, back up, uh, into the reserve account because we've only, uh, it's actually the used. Uh, like only $10,000 and everything else would be, having able to be absorbed by the front of budget there. Uh, uh, it's actually a lot of thing in the field, but the, uh, uh, we had a formula issue, uh, uh, that caused the $1,000 budget, that caused a one, that caused a $1,000 budget reconciliation. So we're offsetting that to bring all of our expenses in line with our revenue. So we have a balanced budget. Uh, the public buildings that come, uh, when the thing come through its, uh, the budget process for FY22, they cut, the public buildings are come by five grand. Uh, at the same time, we, we, uh, have been, we planned for the modular building. Uh, just, uh, and we're given information from, uh, former town account that we would be able to, uh, actually accommodate inside, uh, to everything that we transferred in to the public building account, uh, at the end of the year, which would be needed. Uh, I, all the hookups utility fees, uh, uh, when, uh, when our new town account came on board, uh, uh, she had, uh, she has been following everything according to D O R. And actually had an issue rightfully, had an issue with something being accounted that we actually didn't, uh, have a core contract for the, uh, at the end of the fiscal year. So basically that's a free cash offset, the $10,000 that we had transferred in, uh, at the end of the year to deal with that cost is now becoming free cash, uh, and we have to pay those utility costs. The other five grand of that, uh, we had a, we had an unexpected opportunity, uh, from Bristol Clinic High School, uh, where they have all, uh, uh, where they have volunteered to construct the shed, uh, uh, over at the Brigg's Garden. Uh, they, uh, they donated all the labor as an educational process, but we've, uh, have to find the languages and materials for that. Uh, the transfer, uh, in the admin's billing, uh, fees, um, uh, in the budget process, uh, it, uh, it inadvertently, uh, it, like, uh, inadvertently didn't fund the subscription service uh, that, uh, is needed to process the influence fees. Uh, so that would offset that, that's an operational cost. And, oh, and finally, when our insurance premiums came in, uh, in June, there was $7,000 over what we had budgeted.
One, so 135 is just a transfer from personnel to expense?
Is that an accounting comp?
Yeah.
Yes. Uh, yeah, I've imposed that to expense in the accounting budget.
And then, uh, 174 is which, uh?
I, I, um, it's a budget for the data details committee, like in the formula, it just wasn't, I'll actually pick up in the final version.
The reserve funds to replenish the money we put took out already.
Uh, yes, it's only $10,000.
Okay. Do we want to take these one at a time or?
No, I don't want. I'll motion to approve. No, I mean, we, we, we've asked the questions, we've got the explanations, I feel.
I just asked it because they're, they're different sources.
Yeah, no, okay. Just as, as, uh, I motion to, um,
As recommended by?
As recommended on Article 15, uh, with the funding sources, uh, presented from the town administration. Yes. Right.
I second. All favor?
Aye.
Post.
I think that's easy for you.
Right, so the left show. Article 16.
Last time we did this, we went over budget. Does this take the new number into account that we went over that time? Because I think we went too conservative, then we went quite a bit over.
Yeah.
And being that we had it two years ago, maybe we won't again this time, but disposal fees and stuff are really pretty cracking this year. So I'm just wondering.
If we're not sure, can we?
Like the board house for the next meeting?
Maybe we need to change the number?
Yeah, no, that is.
Before we meet, obviously, a, a recommendation? Yeah, but thank you, Kevin. I know that is a good point.
Yeah, thanks. So right now, we're just gonna, uh, hold on, on 16, yes. I think that'd be a good idea. So no motion from the finance committee?
No.
Okay. Article 17. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, um, $200,000 to capital stabilization.
Would not exceed 200,000.
Not exceed 200,000.
I think it was only for 150, was it?
The.
Next one.
The capital was proposed at 200, the stabilization was proposed at 150, 100.
I would like to see us just hold off on this motion until we get to the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
See what we have based upon the free cash number or what.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
This isn't their person.
So I have a jump to 19. 19, city label, town will transfer from pay access funds, not exceed 14,000, to be spent by the building commissioner for two minutes, but H P C P pump systems for lower level cable TV office town hall. So that equipment get lucky.
I can't, I can't imagine.
The problem is we, uh, because of the configuration of the heating system, we just, we have a duct going in there and it can't be throttled. I can't control the temperature in that room. So the equipment, we really need to be able to just focus on moder, you know, moderating the temperature in that room specifically. And, uh, the heat load is, is fairly significant because of the new equipment that we bought. And we'll, I, uh, efficiency heat pump style systems, which, um, you know, uh, that we control just to that area. And, uh, they'll be really, really cheap to run. These things, this electric though, this building is amazing. Uh, so it's definitely a way to go.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's, it's like Mencipations or something, huh?
Yeah, yes.
You have questions?
One kind of situation that would be funded by the pay access fund, so one, have anyone got it, come?
I motion to set up Article 19, that's right.
Um, second. All favor?
Aye.
Post. To see if the town will transfer from free cash some of 64,500, be expended by the highway superintendent to purchase one big mountain to power. Can I?
Can I show you?
All right. Yeah, that came up, I think this was. We got the, we got the tractor, right, but we didn't get the, um.
Right.
We said the tractor, the wood in.
Yes. Yeah, we said it on the back before.
Mike.
Yes.
Can I ask you a question about this?
It's with you.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, question.
Is it, is this a used or a new one?
It is. So this will be when, this will be when the issue is based on where, uh, like actually the boomers are used.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when the boomers and we have one now, uh, when a boomer hits something unexpected,
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, it could, oh, it can cause a boomer to be out of service for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if it was a new tractor, that the highway superintendent, um, had proposed was approved in the fall, this new boomer would go, uh, uh, I have a new, uh, I have a new tractor.
It's a little rough.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Town Minister.
Thank you.
Can you tell me what the capital stabilization fund was prior to annual and how much we spent from that fund at annual?
We. We, gee, it's, just about agreed, uh, for the, uh, for the list of the, uh, for the first year lease of the firemen. And we got it kind of brought us down to, uh, yeah, like, uh, yeah, like, I think the number that, uh, uh, was presented early was a little, uh, so a little bit off. Like, I wanna say that brought us down to about $600,000, but it's, I could be wrong and.
Where did this stuff come from? Sort of how, when, so the town now says our capital stabilization fund is at 1,033,000?
So.
As opposed to the 600,000 that we just stayed?
The. Uh, uh, I, I can, I can try to get into our budget spreadsheet, I'm sorry, um.
I mean, it could be, because it's different between 600,000.
Uh, yeah, no, no, it's pretty clear, so I get, yeah, I get it completely, um.
Because I recognize it's being closer to the 600,000 number than the.
Uh, yeah, no, and that, uh.
And that's, that's.
Uh, yeah, no, like, my recognition is.
It took me an hour and, almost an hour and 15 minutes to realize that that number was way higher than what I thought.
Uh, no, I recognize it is exactly the same, so.
Okay. So a question, where, where are town accountant grabbing this number from?
Yes.
Um, okay.
Um, actually.
Okay, all right. Don't worry about it, Mr. Town Minister, I think we just had a little sidebar that, that says, you know, I think, I think we are at somewhere around 600,000.
No, I agree with you.
So we'll, we'll let you talk to the town accountant about that next week.
Nope.
To confirm that number back to us.
Yeah, no, I know, like, yeah, as I mentioned, you're not really fine on this.
Okay, so, so I think for funding this, it would be just a, uh, for free cash.
Article 20?
Yes.
Is that a motion? One, second.
Sure.
Second.
Uh, all favor?
Aye.
And post? Uh, if you don't mind, I'm gonna hold this one till the end too.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah.
Yep.
See if the town will vote to move, move, transfer from free cash some of $6,000 to be used in a couple of utility appraisals. New England Power Company, Maselaktik, ever source gas is required by the current revenue for FY22. Is this, this is an annual?
So, yeah, it's an annual appropriations, uh, at first coming to fund the revaluation year end. Our first coming to fund the revaluation year end is PNS. Oh, yeah, I believe the fiscal year 25 is our next rebuild year. Oh, yeah, when we get, oh, yeah, when we get to that, we will already fund all the expenses of the rebuild.
Okay, so we've already funded two thirds of this?
Yeah, I guess like every year, this is a routine thing to fund, yes, the special.
And on the fifth year, we have the accumulation.
Yes, precisely, yeah.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, some 8,000 dollars to use for the systems for FY 23 certification, revaluation of real estate, and purchase a property.
That's exactly the same ratio now.
But for, for 23.
Yeah, but we've already funded.
22.
Right.
Yes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash, some 64,000 to be expended by the police chief. Purchase of one fully equipped police vehicle, including computer, firearm, patrol rifle, radio, antenna, and any accessories relative there too. The only, the only question I have on this, the, the car we bought at annual was 45,000.
Yeah. Oh, so a car, so a car that was funded at the annual town meeting was like an administrative car. Like in the 64,000 dollars would be a fully equipped cruiser.
Was it, was that the detective's car? Is that what that one was, or was that prior year?
Oh, yeah, the, no, the detective's car, that delete, but was it 2019?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the car for the police chief would be fully loaded. Just like we did do for the fire chief, right? And we have all, so I don't think the 45,000 was very cheap. But if I remember correctly, from a couple of years back, this is, this is the more appropriate number. I think it was six, two years ago, it was 6,000 K for, for fully equipped vehicle, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
So this, this with inflation and costs, I think this is about right.
Yep.
Do we know this is, when we say a cruiser, is this a sedan or is this an SUV?
We don't specify, yeah, we don't specify because we like the police chief do it based upon the number that he asked for, but sometimes they're replacing sedans, sometimes they're replacing the SUVs. So. It's kind of, he just has a mind that can solve, you know, the issue.
64,000, I just give that. Okay, so. Did we motion then?
No.
Okay.
Motion to accept out of 24.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See if the town will vote to transfer from free funds, uh, free cash, some not to exceed 3,000 dollars to be expended by the town clerk to purchase ball licensing software?
Oh, yes, so can I, town clerk, he's been incredible, like trying to wrap around and the town, um, uh, uh, like around like issues with dog licensing. Uh, uh, can creating, um, grading and maintaining a list. Oh, that evolves and is current. Oh, can also our current way of dog licensing, uh, if he felt, uh, he writes out a form and uh, the template, so the template software system, uh, to input, uh, all the information in the software, the software would oh, yeah, keep it in track it. Oh, now, same time base, upon the information that he enters into this system. Uh, it would print out, oh, like a dog license with that information. So it's really bringing up, oh, it's really bringing what we're doing up to the ages. Uh, can the town clerk really, this is one of the first things, uh, he's identified as a need. Uh, can I have to say based on the issues, uh, you know, like oh, the issues we're having with dog licensing, how we want to move forward. Oh, yeah, it makes full sense that he's doing this.
Any questions?
No, no, so I'll make a motion to approve out of 25.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
He's talking about 16.
26. You gonna defer this for granted?
Oh, yeah, like the, oh, like, oh, like, actually, the police administration, including the other chief, uh, committed lieutenant. Uh, they applied, oh, like actually for body worn camera grant, um, at the end of August. Uh, so we want to see what happens with the grant first, and then we can revisit.
Do you, my question to the Mr. Minister, do we also know if they have complemented that grant with the writing of a body worn camera policy?
They have a body worn camera policy that, oh, it's in the process of being written and drafted, but yeah, yes.
There's 26 of the third of the.
27. To. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash fund, some not to exceed 26,000 to be expended by the town clerk to purchase four new balance scanners, accessories, technical support, and education services. For a new precinct?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I don't believe we have a choice on this one yet.
This is not an optional one.
Where is the other precinct gonna be?
Um, actually, the town clerk is coming before the board of selectmen at the next meeting on Wednesday night uh, to talk about where new precinct three would be. Oh, I forget exactly where it is now, but that will be the topic of conversation on Wednesday night.
Representative Pedan, when we were at our meeting this week, had mentioned that the town clerk, they would have reached out regarding, um, whether or not any of this could be, any of these fees, I don't know how to say this, could be incurred by the Commonwealth?
Yes.
Um, I forget what the answer was, familiar, familiar with it?
So he, here's, uh, I, I think, but in short, there isn't an answer as of yet. Uh, like, uh, uh, then the work for the others exploring it. Oh, with the town clerk, but with, oh, just having a town election. Oh, oh, before the next special town meeting, I mean, I would recommend uh, having a fine place where we complain for it. Oh, yes, we have the availability of grant funds. Like, at the end of the day, we don't have to spend the money.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No. So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article 28, see if the town will transfer from free cash, some 2,500 dollars to be expended by the town clerk and town treasurer to purchase two laptops with document stations and one printer for use in shared counter space at the newly renovated offices of town clerk and town treasurer in town. This, this is just gonna be their normal laptop?
Oh, yeah, so, uh, so what would be funding is having a laptop with a documentation at the counter. Oh, can printer in the middle, so when, oh, can employees get out, they can do all their business. Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, at the counter on the network with the residents and not, oh, you have to shuffle back and forth and then put it there as well.
Questions?
Sure.
I, I know I can tell you guys that from a capital outlay perspective, this is one of the things we want to get handled on is all computers, uh, home by the town, so that we can put in place a similar, um, practice that we're using for these cruisers. Where we just continuously are refreshing our technology on an ongoing basis.
Yep.
So that's something that we're looking at from capital outlay.
So moved.
Motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. 17, 15, 21.
Yeah. Should we make any changes or? Or go with the 150, 21? Well, actually, this number was already fitted.
Yeah.
There is, there is a few, it, but potentially. So this, let's see.
Number six we're calling.
That's the number six, we, number six, I think we need to account for.
That's a number very simple for you.
Uh, that's true. And. Seven. Not do it, it is.
Not that that wasn't.
Do we need, uh?
That wasn't anything, anything.
No.
And 10, we just pulled five out of reasonably appropriate and moved it to free cash, so we vote free cash, five.
Five.
Number 11, we've got no recommendation on right now, so that would be three.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Oops. 10. Article 12. 17, anyone consider? Okay, that's left out.
Oh, that's all right.
Yeah. 16 is a R and A that we're holding just each other, right?
Yes. But we'll, we'll figure it in at that number.
Right, right. It's reasonably appropriate. The one we changed was 26 on the body cams and that was left off. Okay. So the number is pretty accurate. Yeah, so it's 20, 25 less, so we're 1, 2.
Oh, 1?
1, 2, 1?
Eight, yeah, 1, 2, 1, 1, 6, 75 is what I have right now.
Okay. Which leaves us about 330, based on the preliminary.
Yes.
With the, with the numbers for the Article 17, 18, 21 as.
Uh, uh, I, I have some plans as well. Uh, uh, yeah, budgets, but she, uh, I am math, at the math 31st of this year. Uh, we had 740,000 dollar capital stabilization. Then we backed out about 100, uh, so we're right around 640,000.
So the order was up.
Uh, yeah.
But the other number was accurate. Yeah, the stabilization.
Regular stabilization?
That's an accurate number.
Yeah, the 1.4, yes.
Okay.
Alright, so.
I'm gonna take 21 first. Opep?
Yeah, so we've been funding that regularly at?
35 to 50?
Yeah, 35 to 50. Um, I would, I guess, I guess some of the big question becomes with all the free cash, uh, because even if you add all these up, right? These are already accounted for in there, right? So we've got, that's 300,000. Tell me again what happens to free cash once we don't use it?
It rolls back, yeah.
Rolls into the general fund, right?
It would, it would end up being a free cash, free cash.
So, uh, so, yeah, after we offset any deficits, I can press on property tax and other things. Oh, on the recap sheet, it would go back as well.
To the general fund, yes. So we ended the road.
Uh, I, I, well, no, that just, I mean, I like, I like, I like the fact that in a year where we can, um.
Put extra.
Where we, where we have that much still left in free cash, taking into account these three articles, I think these three articles are and, and I'm gonna be purely selfish here because I'm chairing the capital outlay committee, you know, I like, hopefully, we would like to see to see, you know, 250,000 in there, and I obviously don't want to take away all the free cash that we still have there. But, um, but we haven't, remember, we had that fund over a million dollars two years ago. And then we started using it, but we haven't figured out a way to replenish it. Which is also another big line item on, on the capital outlay committees. How do we work with the finance committee and the board of selectmen to continuously replenish that fund, if not grow that fund, right? Because, you know, let's face it, we got a lot of big projects coming up and, um, you know, in, you know, and, and selectman Hall, you know, mentioned the fuel bomb, you know, with the, the library and the, and the fire station and and not to mention the access road for the schools, that, you know, that money's gotta come somewhere, from somewhere. But if we keep, you know, using our capital stabilization for some of these smaller ticket items, which we have added up over the past few years to the tune of over a half a million dollars, um, to pay for things that we would normally pay for out of free cash. I personally would mind seeing that, that amount raised to 250,000 here, which still leaves us 280 in free cash.
I'm thinking about leaving 21 with the Opep, what is recommended at?
I, I like that number just because we are, and, and, and I know, you know, Ed was really good at, at explaining all of this and and, and the fact that, that we've always funded at 35 to 50, and we're well ahead of other communities around us and around our size. But we have an opportunity here to further jump ahead and, and what, what I think that does is it gives us some leeway in future years that, that basically says, hey, if next year all we can fund is 25,000, that's, that's great because we did
Yeah.
150,000 now, and the fact that if I, if I understand the Opep correctly, this is, um, this is 150,000 that's going into essentially a retirement fund
Yeah.
that is being invested by the state, so we're gonna make more money off of 150,000 today, by putting it in today if we instead we wait for five years down the road to do that.
What is the difference?
Hey, I mean, I think they just invest in bonds, right?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we're investing in Balthomy funds right now. Uh, 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 which, uh, which is like a, uh, which is a question that I have as well, Balthomy was good. Uh, can they have like a, they have a pretty decent amount of investment. Um, however, but I also believe over the last few years, the grid, uh, uh, which is, uh, uh, with, uh, which is a retirement fund managed by the state. Uh, they've also had legal returns. Uh, like every report I wanted to work into see, uh, uh, from an investment point of view with, oh, yeah, where we're at with so where we're at with Balth, uh, where we're at with Balthomy is good, uh, or we can have a greater return for the same risk. Oh, anywhere else?
What, what is the roughly the rate of return that we're seeing today?
I believe when I talked to the treasurer about this like a few weeks ago, like I think that we were right around 45%, I believe she mentioned.
So I think that's what.
Can't work out.
Yes.
Yeah. So it's, 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 that's what I mean, that, that tie wraps now for leaving the number at 150. Um, that's no, committee, committee number.
So I recommend 125 there. Uh, uh, what we have done in prior years, we, uh, through the annual operating budget, we have funded 35,000. Uh, then at the special term, we, uh, uh, oh, yeah, with the free cash, we funded oh, like about another 100,000 grand as well, 100,000 dollars as well. Uh, but in actually talking with that actually, uh, uh, after the spring contract process and the spring, they confirmed that uh, if one of the keep, uh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, actually, where we need to be, we should be funding at about some, about 125,000 dollars a year.
Any, to, from. So if we leave this just the way it is, we've got roughly 3, 300, 330 in free cash.
So if we leave this just the way it is, we've got roughly three, three hundred, three hundred and thirty in free cash. Do you have any concerns with several eight months rest in the year? We, we typically have a lot more free cash going into the second half.
Can you give me a ballpark for typically, like, just like that?
Uh, I would say last year, we had about nine hundred going into the second half.
And are there other things you may consider? Like the, I'm just getting, like, the trail thing, are there a couple of things on hold? Will that number change?
Um.
I guess I'm.
It's possibly going to have a three hundred.
Okay, okay, so, hmm. I would honestly, why would convert the town administrator on this in their first professional expertise?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think the town administrator has already indicated to us, especially in the OPEC number itself. That one twenty-five is what the actuarial have, have recommended, um, and they certainly have a lot more data sitting in front of them than, than me just looking at bouncing numbers off of free cash and, and, and seeing a hundred and fifty K I should, should pay for this stuff. So I, I, I like, I like the fact that our town administrator substantiated it for me, so, so I'm, I'm actually comfortable with his recommendation of one twenty-five.
Oh, so you, you wanna go lower? How is that being realistic?
Well, it makes a, makes a, makes a part of the experts in the actuarial, right?
Yeah, that's true.
That's for information I didn't know until, until we asked.
But you know who's been show up and want more, this is her, that she comes every special town meeting and she sometimes even will amend it, as you know, to, to do a higher number, so. I don't think one twenty-five, it's not my decision, of course, but, um.
So even, even those three articles as they are.
Yes.
Keeping free cash for about three hundred, you're comfortable going into the second half of the year?
So, yeah, I think, uh, if we have an issue that, uh, gets capital nature, uh, uh, we do. Uh, 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 like have capital stabilization, which hypothetically, we could draw from, we could draw from stabilization, but we do. Uh, I also have a buffer by the eight, uh, like roughly the eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars of the one point two million. Uh, yeah, uh, uh, yeah, in my view, it isn't. Uh, yeah, we don't actually have a lot of regular on our fund based on what we value. Uh, so like we're only, like, working with four hundred thousand dollars here. Uh, with the engineering, uh, I got, I got the pleasant street bridge with the, um, with, uh, uh, with the other things that we're doing as well. Uh, uh, I, I think everything is pretty tight, but I'm comfortable with it at this point.
You're not, not waiting until the special town meeting in spring to move more?
Uh, yeah, like if we have an issue, uh, where we, we will need to equip with that free cash, we have to call special term meeting anyway. So like either way, we're gonna, uh, I actually have a special term meeting if we have an issue. Uh, I, I can have a scene issue where we are now, though, no.
We generally really have.
Yeah.
I have a one two hundred display, we are just down for a special town meeting.
Well, you got into a snowball. Is that a lot of that?
Yeah, does that?
Oh, you're talking about, oh, I mean, you're.
That's right.
Yes, we ran over the last, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not terribly concerned about it just because of the fact that now, now we have three sources.
Yes.
I mean, and so we, we stabilization capital, so it's just true as a free cash and, um, um, whereas before, we did have more free cash available to us and so we did have to have a late special. We could, we even had specials just prior to the annual, right? For, for a lot of balance transfers mostly, but we have had some instances where we've had to move money, um, from free cash to a particular budget. Um, and there's nothing that I, uh, could foresee at this point in time that, you know, from an operating expense, which would come out of stabilization or from a, um, a capital outlay that it, we wouldn't have monies available to us, so the fact that we're funding both of those
This, yeah.
um, really just puts it into a different bucket is all. Um, and when we, if we ever came to the situation of needing a special, we can use any combination of funding to support that emergency if we were, um, so that's kind of my take on it. This, this school's not gonna surprise us this year.
No. No.
But the, the, the thing it does do, I mean, in my opinion, is now, now instead of that free cash, us having even more free cash next year, we have a earmark already for stabilization or capital outlay, um, and, and, um, and, and then in point twenty-three, if we have to not fund as much because we need, need more free cash available to us, then that's, then that's how we, we would do it.
I just wonder, does that work?
It's the recommendation, yeah.
Doesn't.
But, but, yeah, I, I, I think if we kept, kept them all, like. Well, they, they, actually.
Two twenty-one.
Yeah, to twenty, yeah, twenty-one, I think is fine the way it is, and I'm, I'll make the most of it to do one, one, the one twenty-five, right, OPEC, all right.
Ninety thousand from free cash and thirty-five raise appropriate.
We've already done thirty-five, right?
No, we took it out.
Oh, we took it out, okay.
Yeah, and that's why, yeah, that's why it's a whole thing with it slipped away.
Yeah, yes, okay.
So is it, we were, our chairman, which is ninety thousand?
From a free cash and thirty-five thousand raise appropriate.
Some of them. So.
All in favor?
I, yeah.
Post. All right.
So.
So then.
About to eighteen?
Yeah, so, so this is actually, so now, now I'm gonna actually look at the difference between stabilization, which in, in capital stabilization accounts. You're talking about one point four plus sitting in stabilization, but only six hundred and forty in the capital stabilization. So if you think about it, what costs more when there's an emergency? Operating expense or a capital expense?
Yes.
Capital, so our, it, it, the reality of it is that we need to start looking at increasing that capital, um, account significantly more than we're increasing our stabilization, regular stabilization fund. If, if we have, if we have a lightning strike, we have to replace every computer in town hall. Let's call that thirty computer, computer, you're talking fifty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars max, okay? We.
So hopefully, you can try and to pick up that cost, but you.
Well, yeah, yeah, well, yeah, so, but then, and then, then if you look at, let's say, uh, the replacement cost of, um, of fire engine that's, you know, involved in a car accident and so, you know, what's gonna cost us more? So I, I think our capital account needs to be grown faster than our stabilization account at this point, especially given how large our stabilization is relative to that.
Are you proposing to recommend that at the special term meeting and maybe change the numbers that are here? For capital and for the.
Well, what, what I think here is let's leave eighteen at two hundred and let's, um, seventeen, what, what is the town administrator recommend? Seventeen?
No, all the way around.
Yeah.
Eighteen is regular stabilization.
Eighteen was recommended at one fifty.
Oh, okay. Eighteen was recommended at one fifty and what was seventeen recommended?
Two, two hundred.
Two hundred.
Um.
So leave two hundred as.
So I think that's, I, I, I like that recommendation from the town administrator, um, because then that also then goes back to your point, um, Chairman Rose about leaving some money in that free cash fund, right, as well. So, but I think, I think, again, going forward, capital outlays would present a plan to, FinCom, to board a selectman to start making these numbers work in the reverse, that capital outlay budget needs to be bigger than the, uh, should be bigger than the stabilization.
Can I ask you, I, it might be a stupid question, so I apologize, is it not possible if something unforeseeable and catastrophic happened and the town had to call some kind of a, almost like an emergency special term meeting? Is it not possible to transfer money via some, maybe a two-thirds vote from one stabilization account into the capital stabilization account?
I would imagine you'd just be, if you were looking to use it on a capital item?
Yeah.
If you guys were, because that would be useful. Yeah, just stabilization. Maybe take it out of both accounts, right, with two thirds, right?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, both of the five, two-thirds vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so, so seventeen motion to recommend two hundred, seven, uh, seven.
All in favor?
Uh, fine.
Post.
And then eighteen is to recommend one hundred and fifty. Correct. Done a motion?
Done.
Set.
All in favor?
I, I.
Post. Do you, I, I have one question in, or if you have more favor to ask one from you, um, Mr. Town Administrator. Um, on the warrant.
Hmm.
Raise appropriate everywhere in here is very clear, it always says raise appropriate.
Yeah.
And I know it's just the way that the articles come in from whoever is submitting them.
Hmm.
But the way that we say transfer from wherever is very inconsistent from article to article, and I think when townspeople are reading the warrant, it confuses them. So you see transfer from available funds.
Yeah.
Right? A- around a lot of these, but then you also see, um, gosh, where were they, um?
Transfer from available funds.
Yes, but some of them just say, oh, transfer from the certified balance.
Yep.
Available funds in the treasury, you know.
Yep.
Um, so if we can make that all consistent wording, it would help, I think, be better for our townspeople, and I'll, but I said that for me, too.
No, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Now, I, it's definitely the people reading, it's definitely people.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty great, yeah.
Yeah. No.
Uh, the only other, the only other item, and it's not necessarily a dollar item, but it does have a finance aspect to it. Um, regards to article thirty-three, so where it's not a dollar article, I think this is more gonna be a question for you guys or maybe it's, it's just a statement of opinion.
Hmm.
But in, in regards to the municipal commission on disabilities, it was a question that I had asked Mike.
Hmm.
Um, basically, two, two different sections, one on, on the officers and then the second on, on duties. My, my question slash issue would be with a commission in town having a treasurer who handles funds and pays bills. I, I personally would not be in favor of having those types of duties anywhere beyond the town accountant, the town treasurer, you guys.
The elect.
For the elect, right, not, not a commission.
Well, we don't have any points other than that's budget for, uh, stipends and expenses, but we don't.
My assumption was that that was meant to the, the, part of the establishments is that we would accept gifts. So my assumption is that the, the, the idea was that that would then handle the gifts, but I would think the same aspect that it should stay within the town accountant, town treasurer.
Jonathan was on it, is he still on?
Yes. Jonathan?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we have a question, you wanna ask?
Okay, yeah, I heard, I heard the question, so the, the, the answer is, first of all, I haven't polled the, um, the members of the commission to see how they feel about a change, and I can do that if you'd like me to. The only reason this was in there was because part of our bylaws, as in terms of adopting them, this was part of the sample bylaw that we were given by MOD. So we left it in there on that basis so that we could accept gifts if we want to. Um, I will say that the, according to the, to the state and what I was informed, informed as well, it's chapter forty, uh, section eight J allows, on one level, allows the commission to accept gifts. There is nothing that says we have to have a treasurer. I think as far as we're concerned, we don't have any objection, I, I could poll the members for your next meeting if you would prefer me to, to etch this in stone, to not accepting gifts directly. They tell me that if we don't, if we didn't have a treasurer and we had gifts that were made to the commission, and I can be, you all could correct me on this much better than I would know, that it would be part of the twenty-two G and then just be need, need, as long as it's there, need to be shown as a line item in the budget each year. But, and if that's the case, we don't have an objection to changing this, we don't, I don't foresee that we would need a treasurer.
Jonathan, I, I would think that as long as the, the gift or donation is restricted to the, the council, the commissions, uh, to the commission, the money would still be used by the commission, but, yeah, in my opinion, it would be better to have a central, to, to continue with the same.
Exactly. And I, I don't, I'm, when I'm, I don't disagree with you, I totally agree with you.
Thank you.
If, if you would prefer, I'm happy to, to call a brief meeting of the, of the members early next week, um, obviously within the two-day posting, just to confirm that. If, if that, uh, is what you would prefer, I don't wanna speak for the members, but I, I seriously thought that there would be an objection.
There is a question from Selecton Z.
Mr. Gale?
Yes, sir.
Hi, sir, um, just a quick question, and it's more about how this bylaw is written. For me, it's a little bit unclear, I understand Jim wrote, wrote a question regarding the treasurer, but when I put down to officers and specifically what the treasurer is, um, tasked with or what their duties are by virtue of this bylaw, it doesn't say anything about managing or accepting the gifts. It most, it mostly mentions that under general powers and duties of the commission, so I, I think maybe that part.
I think.
I don't want to say in conflict, because it's not in conflict, but it's just not very clear who would be managing from the commission any gifts that are received.
And I think that's because chapter forty-eight J doesn't have a requirement that there be a treasurer who is responsible for that. I, I'm, I'm suggesting that I think that that's, that was the meaning behind that, I'm not sure. Um, again, each commission doesn't have to have a treasurer, I know there are some towns that have had treasures for different reasons. Um, but in many cases, especially in, in smaller towns, there are not treasures.
Thank you, sir, Chairman Rose, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Uh, and I guess this is just for you person, personally, are you more comfortable with wording such as, such gifts to be managed and controlled by the town treasurer collector?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gale?
Yes, I heard that.
Would the commission be amenable to an amendment like that, for example, on town meeting floor, I don't think you can change it in the bottom, in the.
I, I think the answer is I, I don't foresee the commission having any objection to that whatsoever, however, if you would like me to formalize that, as I said, I'm happy to, to call a brief meeting, you know, mid next week, just to, to etch that in stone, but I, I, I can't foresee that being an issue.
Thank you, sir, yeah, I think that might be helpful just because it might maybe a question that.
I think, I, I think to codify it, it makes sense, and I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, John, uh, thank you, Mr. Gale.
Mr. Gale, one, one last question on this, and it has nothing to do with finance committee, so I'm asking as a towns person here. Prior to the annual, your chapter six meetings, uh, letter F, notice of meetings will be sent to the members at least fourteen days prior to the meeting. I think that will some, at some point hamstring you guys.
I.
So, so I would string in that and, and really go with, uh, it's the forty-eight hours posting that is available to the public.
Actually, actually, when I was, when I was reviewing this before this meeting and while I was listening to the other things you were discussing, I saw that as well, so, so noted, thank you.
Or, or, yeah, you might even just say follow the open meeting laws of, of the Commonwealth.
It's noted, I appreciate that, and I agree, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that's all, all I've got, any other questions, uh, I'm asking?
On warrant?
You gentlemen?
Uh, what is on the agent?
I have a question for you, and a simple yes or no will suffice, because I, because we don't wanna touch it. Uh, article twenty-nine, I think it's twenty-nine on yours, it's thirty on mine, I know there's not a specific number in there, so I think and suspect that's probably why the finance committee is not acting on it. Is there not gonna be any recommendation either way on that article? I guess that's the question, and I respect, I, I understand and respect the answer otherwise.
Did you have a question?
Okay, Roger, read the answer.
That would really be our, this is my question.
Okay, so you would you would make recommendations when there's an actual request, if it's formed, if it's created?
Unless it's our auto, which would would hardly ever be, but other than that, no, we would
Really never be, because we wouldn't be proposing it.
No, 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 dollar one above would be making a recommendation.
Whoever's put the article there, whoever put the article there is probably gonna be the one that stands up and reads it.
Yeah, we'll go with someone from
It'll be someone from
Right, okay.
And we would probably say, you you know, if we don't recommend it, you know, it could be said at that point, no finance committee recommendation.
Yeah.
However, I would think from a, just a purely financial standpoint
Right.
to have a separate stabilization fund separate from all the other monies is in general a good idea. Why it's taken this long to do that? Who's to say? Because smart people like us wander around, right?
I suspect it's lack of answers over how how it could be sent in the streets that kind of get tied on that.
So so it's taking the, it's it's taking E and D money at some point and putting it into um that stabilization fund. Now, the E and D money, it it would be interesting to see how they account for that E and D money. Because if that E and D money is being generated by either sets of elementary and middle schools, um, then the reality of it is, is that 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 should go into the corresponding town's stabilization fund, right? Um, if it is something that is being generated for E and D that is related to the high school, then that should go into a shared fund.
Correct.
Now, how they have this worded?
Yeah.
Looks like it's just gonna be a single fund, so are they gonna co mingle things? So
That would be
If I think of the floor, who has a towns person, that would be the question that I would be asking is is how do we keep the monies separate? How do we, first off, how do you ascertain how much of the E and D is appropriate for for the town of Dayton, for the town of Rehoboth? And for the co mangled funding for the high school property and and the buildings, right? Um, and if they can't give me an answer on that, then my answer to that question is gonna, my my vote on that is gonna be no. So um
That's very helpful. I really appreciate it.
I would take a bit of the, I imagine that if if we were asked, I think the question to the answer would be based on the information provided. We don't have enough information to
Give it, I don't have the right information.
And then the other thing is, if we all have voted on this as well, for stabilization.
No, I don't know.
So
You know, so there's gonna be a special town meeting, so the
Right.
The school committee presented it, I wrote it to a school board, I think at the beginning of August. Um, at that time, Rockford, the panel of orbit decided they weren't gonna have a special, so
So basically, we all have hasn't voted on this.
No, they won't at least until the spring.
Till the spring.
Till the spring, so
They don't.
Another question that I have, is if you create a stable, if they create a stabilization now? Can they by funding actually create two separate saving accounts of it? At the end of this year, we turn less surplus money back to the town.
As we would imagine. Yeah, I would imagine that's the whole purpose of of that's gonna be, you know, you change Surplus and and they've been using, but they've been using it to reduce our allocations.
Right.
So so instead of reducing our allocations, they're gonna come asking us for more, but they're gonna set aside this money, but if they're only gonna set it aside in a single bucket, then wait a minute, we have some co mangled funds now.
Right.
If someone saved five years' money to go back and what's principal? I don't have high money from FinCom, I can't do that.
No one from town is watching this.
I'm lying, now that I'm in a different role, knowing what I know, that's why I'm very
Yeah, that's
Yes.
But that's that's honestly, that's the the key point of why I brought it up and how I stated that if if they can't answer those questions, then that's why it's supposed to go on.
That's what
Right, but right down, um, uh, like, I'll wait for this meeting to adjourn. Alright.
Any other questions?
Back to me. Thank you for the
Yes.
I just wanna give a quick update on FY twenty two. Uh, uh, everything's in line. Uh, at the end of FY twenty one, uh, then town accountant and I, uh, uh, I just had a quarterly meetings with the town treasurer, with the assessor, uh, without opening up the key, uh, so we're continuing those uh, uh, into FY twenty two. Uh, yeah, hopefully those are gonna be especially helpful. Uh, we start the FY three, as uh we start the FY twenty three budget process as well. Uh oh yeah, oh yeah, so we're organized, we're operating, uh, uh, for the same consensus information and so forth. Uh, we also, uh, hopefully by the end of this month, uh, good D O R will be be getting the financial management review. Uh, right, so at at some point in the next few months, they wanna, uh, I could touch base and talk with the FinCom as well. Uh, we can keep you posted whenever that is.
Other questions to motion to adjourn?
The stand down.